Excellent. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm now going to call to order the September 28th, 2021 Regular Town Board Meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Here.
Councilman Delarada?
Present.
Councilman McPartland?
Here.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Here.
Supervisor Saya?
Here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have approval of the minutes. First, we have the minutes of the July 27th, 2021 Regular Town Board Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? Okay, with no changes, all those in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those minutes are approved?
I'm stating from those minutes since I wasn't here. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have the August 24th, 2021 Regular Town Board Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? Okay, no changes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those minutes are approved. Next, we have our public hearings. Will the clerk please call the first public hearing?
A public hearing on local law amending Chapter 129 of the town code of the town in Niskuna entitled Garbage, Rubbish and Refuge.
Thank you. So the public hearing is now open if anyone wishes to speak. And that includes members of the public who are attending virtually. If you wish to speak in the first public hearing, you can do so now.
Leslie Gold, 1919 Potchuckett Avenue. I'm in favor of the part where we set up one day permit for using the transfer station, recycling the transfer station. I do however have a concern about the fee setting not being subject to a public hearing. As I've mentioned before, I think all the fees, since I know they're looked at as part of the budgeting process, I think all the fees should be part of the budget presentation and should be spelled out in the budget that's presented to the voters, the citizens. But until that happens, I'm opposed to remit this requirement.
Okay. Thank you. The public hearing is still open if anyone wishes to speak. And last call on the public hearing. If you would like to speak, you can do so now. Okay. And I also did not receive any emailed comments from anyone that wished to have those comments read into the record. So with that, I will close the public hearing. We're going to move on to privilege of the floor. So privilege of the floor is now open if anyone wishes to speak. And that includes members of the public who are joining us virtually.
Good evening. My name is Linda Rizzo, 2229 Fairlawn Parkway, Niskuna. I have a few comments to make, and I wanted to say it directly to the board rather than elsewhere. I don't believe in expressing things unless I say it right to people personally. I've had several questions about transparency and accountability lately. Just briefly, quickly, the virtual meeting going, being called, and then that being dismissed, and the public now can come. Then we had the Controller's Report from New York State given to the board on May 7th. You had till May 17th to release it. According to municipal law, it was never released. I have no idea why. I mean, this makes taxpayers like me quite concerned because we are operating in a deficit, deficit spending. I don't care who says how wonderful people are fiscally doing their job. We have a deficit. You keep using the fund balance. It doesn't seem to be going away. So we had that report that was hidden from the public. Intentionally or unintentionally, I don't know. But we were supposed to receive it. That's a violation of municipal law. Okay. Now we have the Stevens affair. Now, this case has more tentacles than an octopus. First of all, there was supposed to be a hearing. And I know members of the public, I was not going to attend it. I had my own, you know, I was, my own meetings for my consultation. But I know people in the public were going to attend this. And all of a sudden, at the 11th hour, it was canceled. And the quote was that it was canceled because you didn't want to put the policeman through it, and it was going to be handled internally, which is fine, and the charges were going to be dropped. Okay. The Gazette has an editorial on this, and other people commented on this in the paper that wanted to attend it, that this seemed a little strange or fishy. Let me put it that way. Well, what happens is, we get a press release Friday at about 5:00 PM, hits the press outlining all the charges on Deputy Stevens. I found that peculiar. And under the guise that this was a matter of what we call transparency, and even Judge Powers' ruling was cited. Well, first of all, I don't call that transparency. I call that bushwhacking Stevens. Now, I don't care what the charges are. They're petty. Let me put it frankly. Some of them were petty, reading them. And also could be exaggerated because there's no public hearing. His lawyer couldn't interrogate anybody. Well, that comes, and then Judge Powers' ruling is cited. Now, his ruling, and I had to look it up because I know freedom of information law backwards and forwards. That, his ruling was not that a supervisor or any board member could willy-nilly take somebody's personnel file and give it to the press, a police officer. It has to be in context with the freedom of information law. You just can't divulge this stuff on your own. The other issue about the counseling letter that bothers me is, I have dealt in human resource. I have had 200 employees, and I can tell you, I have written a few counseling letters. The way this is handled, and this is why it's aggravating, is that the person is called into a meeting privately. He brings his or her representative. The charges are, or the complaints, really. These were complaints. They weren't really major charges on Stevens. That the complaints are brought forward, the person has a right to defend himself. The attorney is there. The union rep is there. If the administrator intends to still give a counseling letter, which is the administrator's prerogative, they write it. That's put in the file. It is never discussed in public forum. Never. I have never heard of it done that way. Secondly, a counseling letter, if these charges were so egregious, if Stevens would have been put on administrative leave with pay, there would have been an investigation. A counseling letter is a slap on a wrist for minor infractions. Plus, you're using anonymous letters. Now, I don't know any administrator who relies on anonymous letters. They usually, you read it, you call in the person, you show them the letter, it goes in the circular file. And there's another anonymous letter floating around that you have that was never given to the press. All right. So now we have that issue. Now, what I don't understand is, I'm reading the paper, The Times Union, and they had an article, and in it, it says Stevens says he was going to subpoena the supervisor in Denise McGraw. Now, my comment or my thought is, I don't know why Denise would be subpoenaed. She doesn't have anything to do with the police department that I know of. Bill McPartland is the chair. Denise is the chair of Sewer and Water. Now, if Bill McPartland was going to be subpoenaed, I can understand that because they might ask questions like, did you hear of these things going on? What do you know? So, as again, Denise has nothing to do with the police department. Why he's subpoenaing her, I don't know. No comment was made. Apparently, the attorney made no comment. Nothing was said. It appears to me, when there is going to be a public hearing, an organization, I don't care if it's a school district, a government organization, or whatever, does not cancel that hearing unless it's going to make someone look bad. I'm sorry. That's just the facts. No one, because Stevens would not, the worst that could happen to Stevens is, he'd get a counseling letter. He wanted the hearing. So my question is, did the subpoena of you, Yasmin, and Denise have to do with the canceling of the hearing? Because the people that had the most to lose would be the two of you, not Stevens, if you were going to be subpoenaed. And I believe you were going to be because he said his attorney was going to do it. Now, board members, and I believe them. I don't think any, I mean, Lisa Weber, I know, has nothing to do with this. She's brand new on the board. Every executive decision you've issued, I have been told, nobody knows anything about this, Yasmin. You never discussed it with the board. Not a word. I cannot believe you're issuing these edicts all on your own without any conversation with any board member. Somebody on this board has to be involved. And I'm sorry, but I have to, I know, I know Bill knows nothing about it. I know John has told me he doesn't know anything about this stuff. So I have to ask, Denise, are you an accessory to canceling the public hearing on Stevens because your name was there, was going to be subpoenaed? I mean, people would like to know that. And again, I'm going to be honest. Bill knows nothing about it. John knows nothing about it. And Lisa knows nothing about it. So you have to be talking to somebody, Yasmin, other than yourself. When you canceled the virtual meeting, why? You don't want anything out there before the election? When you hid the Controller's thing, you didn't want the public to know? Then the Stevens hearings gets canceled? This looks very bad. And the next question is, I don't understand why Bill McPartland wasn't involved in the police chief's appointment. He's head of the police committee, and he did, he did not complain about it. I'm just questioning this as a rational, intelligent being, why he wasn't involved in the picking of the police chief for making statements. He's in, he's the chairman of the police depart, committee and safety. Denise is in charge of the water and sewer. So I don't know why she was involved making statements and he's not involved. So there's a lot of questions out here. And I do believe that the town had more to lose with Stevens' hearing than Stevens. Stevens really had nothing to lose. Except he's been embarrassed and humiliated, just like Sebastha was, just like McManus was, just like Fran Wall was, and now we have Stevens. And the fact that no one said, when I asked the question, no, I had nothing to do with the canceling of this public hearing. I was not an accessory with Yasmin, leads me to believe there are more questions than answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor is still open if anyone else wishes to speak.
Leslie Gold, 1919 Potchuckett Avenue. I hadn't planned on addressing the issues with the deputy chief, but I have to disagree with the characterization of the charges as petty. I have found several of them quite serious and quite alarming, and most definitely concerning to call one of our officers part of a terror cell. I mean, that's over the top. I'm sorry. That's not a petty charge. That's something very serious. And I'm still uneasy with the way matters have been handled. I do, however, want to extend my congratulations to the new chief and wish him well. Hopefully, we'll have some stability and things will work out. But I primarily wanted to address, really, is the budgeting process. I know the Controller wanted to start the budget process earlier. And apparently did, but I still don't see the budget workshop scheduled. I don't see a date for the vote on the budget. I will note that state law sets a deadline, but that doesn't mean you need to wait till the deadline. And indeed, I think it's inappropriate to wait till the deadline in case, as there was last year, there were issues. That needs to be worked.
I think there are dates set. There might just be an issue with it being online. But Leslie, I believe the dates are set, so.
Your deadlines. We've had budget votes in advance of Election Day.
Oh, I don't know. I just know, I know the workshops are starting. I mean, Yasmin, they're yours, so.
The schedule needs to be made public. It should be on the website by now.
Yes, and those budget workshops have been scheduled. I can show you where they are.
On the calendar.
We'll send her another email blast. That was part of Supervisor's Report, but we can address them now, that another email blast will be sent out delineating all of those states. But thank you for bringing that up.
And as I said before, I know when the budget's put together, the point of the budget is to balance anticipated revenues with expenditures. You have to look at the fee schedule then. So to me, it makes sense that it be part of the process, that it be part of the public process. I would like to see that enshrined in a resolution, that it is part of the process and that current fees and proposed changes will be part of the budget document, and people will have a chance to comment at the budget hearing. That's transparency. Waiting until January, saying, oh, by the way, we were planning on doing this, but we didn't want to tell you then. That's not transparent. It's not the way the town should run. It's not the way the town used to run. Thank you.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor is still open if anyone wishes to speak. And that includes members of the public who are joining us virtually. If there are any members of the public joining us virtually who wish to speak, you can do so now. And last call on privilege of the floor. If you would like to speak, you can do so now.
I just have one statement to make, and I will.
Your name and address again.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Linda Rizzo, 2229 Fairlawn Parkway. I am not saying that the charges mirrored it just a little goodbye, you know, it's okay. I'm saying that a counseling letter, and I'm speaking from my expertise in human resource, is not what one would call something that would be in the public forum like this has been. And I'm sorry, but I don't understand. People are worried about the St. Clair's workers not getting their pension. Well, how about our employees being treated properly here? And my concern is, why the meeting was canceled? It, it did not affect Stevens. But now we know that two of our officials were going to be subpoenaed. I'm sorry. Those are serious questions that I think the public has a right to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call on privilege of the floor. If you would like to speak, you can do so now. Okay, seeing no one left willing to speak during privilege of the floor, I'm going to close privilege of the floor. We're going to move on to our committee reports. We're going to begin with Councilman Delarada.
Thank you, Supervisor. As you know, I am the Chair of the Economic Development Committee and Historical Preservation. We meet the first Friday of every month, and this Friday, it will be October 1st, and that will be 8:30 here at the Town Hall. And it should also be, I believe, hybrid and broadcast as well. On the agenda, you will see a resolution tonight recognizing Ms. Andrea Worthington for her many years of service to the town of Niskuna. She has dedicated 29 years to the town, mostly for the tree council. And Ms. Worthington actually was critical in the first implementation of the tree ordinance in the early 1990s, walking with developers and neighbors to establish tree-lined streets. So there is a resolution on to commend her for that. And I was out in the Story Ave neighborhood this weekend, and many of her neighbors do know and respect her work that she's done on the tree council as well. We're also excited to be finalizing the EV charging stations at our parks. Ms. Murphy McGraw and I have been working on this initiative, and it is another step undertaken by the town in our goal to be a climate-smart certified community. This is very important. It will help boost property values in the area and encourage sustainability in our parks. The Planning Board is working on sketch plans for several large projects in the town, so it is worthwhile to tune into those Planning Board meetings and attend them for any input that you may have as town residents. We are always thankful to our boards and volunteers for the hard work that they put into the town, and certainly, the Planning Board are one of the hardest member, hardest working boards that we have in our town. Again, our next meeting will be Friday, October 1st at 8:30 here at Town Hall and broadcast live as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we move on to Councilwoman McGraw.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you, Councilman Delarada, for mentioning the electric vehicle chargers. This has been a project long coming. We've been working on it for, for months now. It's a number of departments working together, from Highway and Ray's Crew to Matt Yedo and Public Works, the Planning Department. And I'm really excited about this, and the reaction from the community has been quite strong. So I'm pleased to see we're moving on this. Well redevelopment is moving along quite well. Couldn't do that if I tried. But for the Water Department, and this is a very important piece for us, where we are able to develop our own wells in town. We're not reliant on another municipality to buy water from. It's very expensive to do it. So as much as we can possibly do in-house in town, we try to do. So I'm grateful to the team of people who are redeveloping our wells to allow us to have Niskuna water in Niskuna. We're adding some staff tonight. Matt Yedo has been very busy in trying to attract the best and the brightest. Everyone knows the job market is very, very tight right now, but we believe we're adding three very strong staff members, and I look forward to working with them. This Saturday is our shredding day. This is something we started a few years ago. We have tried to keep it going. It was waylaid a little bit due to COVID, but I am happy to see it moving forward. It's a new location. We had done it here at Town Hall for years. We're going to do it at our transfer station because we've been making upgrades to the transfer station for a while now, and we want to show off everything that's going on over there, taking down the water and sewer garage and all the updates that both Matt and Ray's teams have been working on. So we'd like to show them off. So we'll see folks Saturday morning for shredding and electronics recycling. The Halloween Parade is on Halloween this year. This will be, I believe it'll be the 20th annual parade that I have run for the, and we moved it over to the town about a dozen or so years ago. And so we're pretty excited. 4 o'clock right here, we're going to have costume contests and things like that. So we look forward to seeing folks on Halloween. It's always a great event. And that is all I have, Madam Supervisor.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we're going to move on to Councilman McPartland.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Police and Public Safety Committee met on September 7th. Operationally, the department has finished their fourth round of testing of body cameras, Motorola watch guard. They have one more system that they're going to test, so we continue to test camera systems in hopes that we'll be able to get a grant to upgrade our system, not only for our vehicles, but also for body cameras. The Police Reform Implementation Panel Committee met on the 23rd of September, and I don't know if the Supervisor is going to report on that, but we've elected some officers for that committee, and that continues to move on and progress well. Building-wise, Deputy Chief reported that he has worked with Charlie Brigami to get the key system on the chief's computer. We'll have an update on that at some point from our new chief, hopefully. And the deputy chief was also working with Ray for the striping of the safety exchange zone in the parking lot. Training-wise, Northern Rivers had some bad news that they were not able to get the grant for the multi-jurisdictional CIT training program. They're going to continue to work on that, and hopefully, they will be successful at some point for more training from Northern Rivers. The active shooter training session that was going to take place here in Niskuna, at Niskuna High School, it seems like that may be being relocated. I just found this out this week from Chief Koshan, and he will continue to stay on top of that. Citizen issues, we got some letters from some people about a possible cross, crossing guard at Union Street and Cornelius, also crosswalk markings on Knott Street and Vinator Village area across from Shopright, which we, the Police and Public Safety will work with, our Highway Department, to see what the possibility is for those things. Also, we got a letter from a resident about speed reduction in Aqueduct Road area. The deputy chief then put out a memo to all the sergeants to increase enforcement and patrols in that area. Community events, we discussed Niski, Niski Day, and it's successful. We also have a resolution coming later this evening for our auxiliary police department, thanking them for all the time they put in at that event for us. Farmer's Market continues to on with good attendance. The Mohawk Hudson, Hudson Mohawk Marathon, which is on October 10th. Our deputy supervisor and deputy chief, and Brian Backus from the Supervisor's Office, met with those people and are working on that plan because that's a big event that we need multiple, lots of officers on, and the auxiliary for that event. Police and Public Safety, we discussed marijuana dispensaries, and the thought from the Police and Public Safety Committee is to have a resolution for a moratorium on them by the end of this year. We would like to do that because that would give us more time as a town, and the Town Board, and the Planning Department to work on whether we're going to do this or not. Doesn't mean we're not going to have things, but it just gives us the ability to have more time. So we brought that over to the Economic Development and Planning Committee.
Okay, so we've talked to Laura about that because my understanding is, our current zoning laws really kind of box it out from virtually the entire town. There's only a small couple of strips around town.
Well, right, so we need to talk to her about that, but if we do pass some legislation, that will give us more time to fine-tune whether we want them even at all in the town. So something we have to discuss and look into. Personnel-wise, we've got a new lateral transfer officer, Favada, who was hired, and he is on field training right now, and hopefully, within very short time, he will hopefully be out on his own. The next Police and Public Safety meeting is going to be on October 5th at 8:00 AM. I'd like to just take one opportunity here to welcome and congratulate Chief Koshan, who is in the back of the room this evening, on his appointment to Chief of Police. We have very, three very, very qualified candidates, and he was selected to become our new chief. And again, we want to welcome him and congratulate him on that. Lately, there's been a lot of media coverage about the Niskuna Police Department, as we've heard tonight from one of the residents. Some of it's been about our deputy chief, Mike Stevens. Mike Stevens has served this town for 20 years in various roles in the police department, and he takes his responsibilities and his duties as a police officer very seriously. He's acted as the chief for approximately nine months in the department and has served admirably to the best of his abilities. He has served this town. I believe he took the allegations very seriously that were brought up against him, as this board takes these matters very, very serious. board takes these matters very, very seriously. It's unfortunate that the recent media coverage really doesn't reflect this. Issues have come out one-sided, and in a manner that I feel are not the best for this town, and are not a good measure of justice. So now, we've got a new chief, Chief Koschan, who's here with us this evening, and it's time for this town, the department, to move forward. We have a very professional police department with a lot of professional officers and a lot of very good people. And I will continue, as it is my duty, to support them, and to support the Chief of Police to the best of my abilities, because that's what I was elected to do here as a representative of the residents of the Niskuna, Town of Niskuna. So that's all I have, Supervisor.
Thank you very much. I'm going to move on to the Highway Parks and Recreation Committee. So first, for our Highway, our crews have finished street paving for the year, and I'd like to thank all of the departments that were involved in that initiative. Crews will finish up landscaping and hydro seating of the streets that have been paved, and are also finishing up landscaping in Blatnick Park around the new parking area and the splash pad. Tree crews are out cleaning up storm damage from the recent storms and are attending to resident requests related to the storm debris. Highway crews are working on some recent drainage issues, along with patching of roads before the cold weather arrives. For our community programs update, the Niskuna Driving Range is now operating at fall hours, so the driving range will be open Saturdays and Sundays only from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and will be closing for the season on Sunday, October 24th. Special thank you goes out to the Highway Department as well for maintaining the range and keeping it in such great shape. Registration opens October 1st for pumpkin painting at Town Hall. That will take place on October 17th from 12 to 1:00 PM. The fee for pumpkin painting is $7 per child, and registration is limited at this time to 12. The schedule for October movie nights at Town Hall are in the process of being scheduled, and once finalized, we will send an email blast out with the schedule and the movie For senior programs update, the end-of-season party is wonderful despite the bad start to the weather for the day, but luckily, the weather cleared, and the music, food, and new bocce area were enjoyed by all who attended. Mahjong continues to grow exponentially in popularity, as does pickleball. Tonight, we have a resolution to appoint a new senior bus driver, which will free up Matt Major, who we'd like to thank for his service to take on a full-time position in the Highway Department under Ray Smith. We thank Matt for his dedicated service once again. Exercise classes are well-attended in hybrid form. The Gershon's Launch Program remains steady and very popular, and overall, program attendance continues to grow, which we are happy to see. The next meeting of the Highway Parks and Recreation Committee will be on Wednesday, October 6th at 8:15 AM. That meeting will be held hybridly, so those who wish to attend in person can convene here in the Town Hall boardroom. Those who wish to attend virtually can request a meeting invitation. And that concludes the committee reports. I'm going to move on to the Supervisor's Report. So as was spoken about earlier, and thank you, Leslie, for bringing that up, we are in the midst of budget season, preparing for the 2022 budget. We are set to file a tentative budget this Thursday, September 30th. Again, that's this Thursday, September 30th. That budget will be posted online. It will also be emailed out through an email blast. A budget calendar will be distributed via an email blast and posted to the town's website. This calendar will feature the dates of the forthcoming budget workshops. We have three budget workshops scheduled thus far. The first one beginning October 4th, that'll be the Budget Presentation Workshops. It'll be the initial presentation. I will give a brief overview, brief 20-minute overview, and then we will proceed with the Budget Presentation Workshop. So again, we have three scheduled, October 4th, 5th, and 6th, but again, those are on the website, and through the email blasts, those will be specified as well. I look forward to the Budget Presentation Workshops, most especially this year, because our department has, will be presenting their department's accomplishments for 2021, which are hard to come by in the age of COVID, but they had a lot of accomplishments, and those should be highlighted. They're also going to present their goals for 2022, so I'm very excited to hear those presentations. And lastly, tonight, we have a resolution to approve the town's participation in NI Class, which is the New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System. I know it's a mouthful. NI Class is an investment fund designed specifically for the public sector, and only in investments legally permitted under New York State General Municipal Law. NI Class provides the opportunity for short-term investments that are safe and specifically yield favorable returns. Our participation in NI Class will yield more competitive earnings and increased revenue to the town. And I want to thank our comptroller, Ismael Alom, as well as members of her team, Janet Nguyen and Frank Basile, for their diligent work in procuring this government investment pool. Thank you all very much. That concludes my Supervisor's Report. We are now going to move on to the resolutions. We are going to begin with Resolution 2021-218, sponsored by Supervisor Syed and Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing an individual to the Board of Assessment Review.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just wanted to note that the agenda puts me as a co-sponsor with the Supervisor, but the actual resolution does not, so if that can just be updated. I want to thank Mike Del Vecchio for being willing to serve again. He is, he may be the longest-tenured member of the Board of Assessment Review right now. He works very well with the entire team of people on that board. It is a critical board for our community. It has folks from all walks of life. I'm sorry she left, but Linda Rizzo has served on the board for a number of years. They may not always agree, but I believe that every person who comes before the Board of Assessment Review believes they are treated fairly, believes they are heard. Even throughout COVID, they worked overtime to ensure that people had an individual touch, an actual one-on-one, and they've done a great job, and that's really thanks in very large part to Mike Del Vecchio's expertise and his willingness to really put his heart and soul into this, so I thank him for being willing to serve again.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I had the privilege of serving with Mike on that board for several years, and he does an excellent job. He's very knowledgeable. I'm really happy, we're very fortunate that he's continuing.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Delarada?
Yes.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution, 2021-218, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing participation in NI Class.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just want to reiterate what you just said. The comptroller's leadership through this process was just unbelievable, second to none, her team, the data that they culled, the data that was provided to everyone through this. I just really want to thank the comptroller, and this is really one of the benefits of hiring an experienced comptroller, somebody who's been in other organizations, who has served other municipalities, who sees what works, who sees what doesn't work, and be able to bring those best practices to our community. So thank you very much, Ismael Alom, for all your work on this, and Janet, and Frank, and your whole team.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Delarada?
Yes.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution, 2021-220, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution supporting the former employees of St. Clair's Hospital during their pension crisis.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just, I want to thank Elena Finnan for pulling this together. We don't have many resolutions around here where we've passed, we've passed unanimously, we've worked very hard on, and then we have to revisit because the issue just was simply unaddressed. I think it's a crisis. It's not just a financial crisis, it's a moral crisis that this issue has not been addressed. I want to thank the leadership of Assemblyman Santa Barbara, Senator Tedesco, and many local elected officials to continue to rise up, raise up this issue, and put the focus on it, and that's what we're attempting to do tonight. I believe that Kathy Hochul, our new governor, is the kind of person who would jump right in and try to help on an issue like this. This is the kind of issues, these are the kinds of issues she has worked on in the past, and I'm just hopeful when her team is in place, they will be ready to focus a lot of their energy on getting this resolved for the 1,100 people who have been impacted.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to thank Councilwoman McGraw for bringing this forward. Prior to myself coming to this meeting, I happen to have on the Channel 6 news, our local station right there in Balltown Road, and this was featured on their news station. It's important for us as a, so thank you, for a local government body to put this forward, keep it out there in the public, to try to get this resolved. These pensioners that now are struggling, there needs to be some resolution to this. Mistakes were made in the past, it's time for them to be corrected, and that's what this board is putting forth here in this resolution to encourage our other lawmakers to do those, the things that they need to do to right this situation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I would like to echo the sentiments stated. I'm grateful for Councilwoman McGraw for sponsoring this resolution, and I'm grateful for this Town Board for what I believe to be unanimous passage, and the fact that we did have a very similar resolution a couple of years ago, where we wanted to call attention to this very issue. So while it's unfortunate that it hasn't been solved yet, I think the focus that we keep on the issue will prod our leaders further and ultimately solve this issue for those pensioners, or should I say, you know, the individuals who are lacking their pension that they are due. So with that said, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Delarada?
Yes.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution, 2021-221, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution employing a part-time worker in the town's Office of Community Programs.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Delarada?
Yes.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution, 2021-222, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing certain budget modifications.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Delarada?
Yes.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution, 2021-223, sponsored by Councilman Delarada and Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of electric vehicle charger stations for certain Town of Niskuna parks.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I'm just thrilled to be moving forward on this, and moving forward on it in one of the most efficient and effective ways possible. This is about $130,000 project of infrastructure that's going to go into our town, throughout our town, and it will cost the town about $7,000. The grants that we have been able to attract for this, the partner that we have been able to work with, who have, who has been able to get those grants and put that infrastructure in, and work with us for exactly what we need, work with Ray Smith's team, doing site visits and making sure that they're going exactly in the right spots throughout the town, has just really been a fantastic opportunity for us. We're working with a partner that's also working with the county, so we're able to maximize that. The library is not our facility, but from working with everyone and working together works, as we all know, the county is going to do the library for us, so we would have a whole loop of this electric vehicle charger infrastructure. So I want to thank my partner in this, John Delarada. He has really taken on this issue and really very interested in it, so this has been a great endeavor for us.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Just briefly, this is a great savings to the town. Ms. Murphy-McGraw worked really very diligently at putting this together, so we're going to have some new charging stations here at Town Hall to replace the one that's currently here, and then additionally, at Blatnick Park and Lines Park, so our residents can charge their vehicles while they're using the Town Hall and our parks and bike paths and the like. So thank you again, Ms. McGraw.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Delarada?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution, 2021-224, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution enacting a local law amending Chapter 17 of the Town Code of the Town of Niskuna entitled statutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Delarada?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution, 2021-225, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution approving the first half of the 2021 Residential Commercial Utility Bill warrant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Delarada?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution, 2021-226, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution amending Resolution 2021-132.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Delarada?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution, 2021-227, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution hiring a senior civil engineer.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Delarada?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution, 2021-228, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution hiring a wastewater treatment plant operator.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Delarada?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin? Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution 2021-229, sponsored by Councilwoman, Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution hiring a wastewater treatment plant operator training.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just want to welcome, we are adding three very key players to our water and sewer staff. William Olson, I want to welcome him this evening. Alexander Yakabuchi, again, a very key position in our system. And Daniel Bulk, I look forward to working with all three of them, and I want to thank Matt Yeto for all of the energy that he put into attracting these three outstanding candidates.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Dellarata?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution 2021-230, sponsored by Councilwoman, Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into a contract for sewer grounding services.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Dellarata?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution 2021-231, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution regarding a fence easement agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Dellarata?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Syed?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next Resolution 2021-232, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution awarding a contract for banking services.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank you, Madam Supervisor. I also want to thank the comptroller again. I want to thank her team of Janet and Frank. This was an enormous undertaking. And again, it's the kind of endeavor that happens when you have a seasoned professional who knows how to do projects like this. She came to the supervisor and I, six months ago easily, and said, I think we can save money and I think we can do better if we put out a banking RFP. And she went about doing it. She handed me binders that literally were this high of all the proposals. She worked with each one of the respondents. Her team put together overviews of each of these binders full of materials for the supervisor and I to go through and to make a selection of who we believe will be the best for our town. The town is evolving, it is changing. COVID has showed us we need to do a lot of other things in addition to just accepting payments at a, at a window. I'm sure Michelle would be the first person to agree with that, and being able to do all the kinds of things that people expect from banking and people expect from paying someone, we are going to be able to do in the town now. And that is thanks to our comptroller and her team, thanks to the supervisor who sat through all these interviews. It was really some endeavor, but I, I think it's really going to benefit the entire community and the bottom line of, of the town.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.